Thank you for being here for this Kauai County Council candidate's election pop-up. We were on Maui on Wednesday and we had 10 of the 14... No, no, I think it was 12 of the 16 candidates there. And tonight, we have 10 of the 14 candidates, correct? And you guys have seven pukas to fill, is that right? So different from county to county. And you know, Oahu doesn't have... We have a runoff only if you get 50% plus one. On Maui, it's the top two that advance, and then you guys have your own system. So it's education. That's why we try and get out of Oahu, try and visit the neighbor islands to meet people in person, to learn what we could do better, to get story ideas. We're gonna run from about 5:30 to 6:30, just in terms of each of the candidates speaking with a quick follow-up. I think we said four minutes, and then I'll probably have a follow-up. That's Ashley in the Civil Beat shirt. She's got signs. One of them will say "one minute", and the other one will say "that's the only sign we have". Okay. And I might be hovering a little bit over here, but then I'll come up afterwards and ask you just a quick follow-up question. If that's okay. And then, we'd love for you to, you know, say hello to each other. I guess you guys all know each other. And then, but if someone has a question of others' people show up, they can ask questions. Please take food with you and take water, because we gotta fly back to Oahu and we don't... If for some reason we couldn't finish all the water and food, is there a place we should drop it off, you think?
Yes.
We can run over.
Is there... We could just give it to the chickens outside, I suppose. I don't know if there was a homeless center or a hospital or anything, if not. But that's why, if you could take it, just fill it up. My name's Chad Blair. I'm the politics editor of Civil Beat. We're not live, so just letting you know, but we are recording, and we will be posting this later. But please silence your telephones. And also, no applause. I mean, I'd like to have everyone have equal... It's kind of like the Academy Awards. Remember when they show the... All the actors that died? And it used to be that people would clap for a lot of them, and then they wouldn't know who so-and-so was. So the Academy Awards then killed, you know, the audio, so that nobody got embarrassed like that. So it's not the best analogy, but we are recording this, right? And we wanna post this. And we don't wanna play favorites. We're a nonprofit. That's what we're not here to do, is to, you know, favor a candidate. By the way, nearly all of you filled out the candidate Q and A. I wanna say thank you for that. They are posted on our website, and people read these Q and As, especially as the election draws near. I tell you, the candidate Q and As they get to read the most in the last week is OHA. People just don't know who is running for Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and if you didn't know, all of us get to vote for OHA. And you don't have to be Hawaiian to vote for OHA or run for OHA. But that's also the races that the fewest people tend to vote for. But that's another story. We have one more election pop-up next week. It is for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and that's at our Civil Beat office. Is that on Tuesday? Wednesday, okay. And that's up on our website as well, at civilbeat.org. And then, we do ask you to be civil, be nice to each other, don't attack each other here. You got other places to do that. You can buy an ad, you can sign wave. But that's not really what we're about. We're just trying to have you kind of boil down the essence of your message. And we've asked you, and thank you for cooperating not to have... I don't mind t-shirts, but we can't have people, you know, holding banners and signs and things like that either. We really want to listen and hear from people. So, before I begin, just a reminder. Four minutes, you can say what you want, but where you're from, why are you running, two or three issues that are most important to you, and then a quick follow-up from me. The order has been picked randomly, and without further ado, we're gonna go ahead and start with Bernard Kurvalio. Come on up. No pressure.
No pressure. No clap. Good evening and aloha. My name is Bernard Kurvalio Jr., born and raised on this beautiful island of Kauai. Graduated from Kapaa High School and had the opportunity to get a full athletic scholarship to the University of Hawaii, played for the Rainbow Warriors. And then went on, had the opportunity to be drafted by Miami Dolphins, and had that opportunity as well. So I wanted to share a little bit about that. And then, of course, in 1984, '85, I got married to my wife Regina. Been married for 39 years right now, pretty much. And we have six adult children and six grandchildren. So that's a whole other chapter in our life, which we love. And that's important to me, because what we do as council members and leaders is about family and our keke. So I wanted to make sure we worked that. I started in the county of Kauai in 1985, under then-mayor Kunimura at that time. And then worked my way up in different divisions, different levels. And then, under Mayor Baptiste, I had the opportunity to be a department head or oversee the offices of community assistance, which consisted of elderly affairs, recreation, housing, and of course, all of the different... Transportation was the other one. So I just wanted to share some of my experience internally. And so that was a big part of working within the county. And then, of course, after that, I was able to take the opportunity to serve as mayor for 10 years. And that, after the passing of our dear Mayor Baptiste, I served for... to fulfill his two-year term and went two more terms, which made a total of 10 years. So within that time, we did a lot of different things. I followed up on projects that needed to be done. But some of the projects that took place was, of course, major housing projects. Holopua over in Hanalei, we have that project out there. Kaneko'o right here in Lihui, we have a housing project that we completed. Limaola is moving forward. I mean, sometimes, as leaders, we start or we pick up with the other one left off, and you just keep going. And I think that's important for you folks to know. So housing is a big part for me. The landfill, of course, is a big, big issue here on our island. We gotta really do what we gotta do. We need to site a location. We need to make sure we take care of our waste in every way possible. So I know the process of that, and that's important to all of us. Another big part, of course, is housing. And I know all of us are looking at housing. We wanna keep our keke, our kupuna, everybody home. So I wanna make sure that. So those are the top three, the housing, the landfill, and of course, working closely to assure that we get good, good opportunities overall. And a county council... I've been a county council member for two terms, and this upcoming election is my third term. So I bring to the table a wealth of understanding and knowledge internally, and I have a wealth of knowledge externally within the public eye. So I look forward to bringing all of my manao to the table and sharing it with our community and our public. And I really am very thankful for the opportunity to hopefully be able to serve another term. Thank you so much. I ask for your vote. I ask for your confidence in me as a member of our community. More importantly, with the advice and understanding of what it takes to make things happen on a beautiful island of Kauai. Mahalo and aloha.
One question for you.
Oh, okay.
I think you're taller than last time, I swear. I do gotta ask you this question. Yeah, you've been mayor 10 years, on the council, worked in various departments. Is there one issue over your career in government that's stumped you, vexed you, been so difficult to come up with a solution? Could you name what that one was and how you've done with it?
Yep. Landfill. Ah. Landfill. I did talk about it.
You did, go ahead.
Again.
Because remember, a lot of people are gonna see this, tell us about how you're dealing with the opala, because we're dealing with that on Oahu, we're dealing with that in Maui, all the counties. You got the problem right here.
The landfill on our island needs attention. And when I left as mayor, we located an area right centrally, right here. We had everything done. We worked with the community, we worked with the public, we worked with different levels of government to site a new landfill. It was done. All we needed to do is follow through. So I'm gonna leave it at that. I'm willing to work whatever I gotta do with my fellow council members to continue to locate a landfill on an island that can really take care and do what we need to do to take care of our waste in a very proper, environmentally safe, and community-minded way. And it's gotta be involved, the community and everybody's input, to make sure that we do it in the right way. So mahalo.
Thank you so much. That was Bernard Kurvalio, we all know that. Abe Apilado, you're up next, randomly chosen. Come on up. But you know, if you gotta take care of the keke, you wanna... I could pass, bring you up later. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, good afternoon or good evening. My name is Abe Apilado. I am running for Kauai County Council. Little bit about me, guys, a little bit of background. I am born and raised here on Kauai. I live in Waimea. I'm a Westside boy. Same thing as Bernard. Played football, went to college in Montana. I never learned nothing up there, because I knew what I was gonna be when I came home. Okay? And I was a commercial fisherman. I was a fisherman for the last 18 years. I've been doing it as a livelihood, full-time. And yeah, that's what I do. I'm married to my wife Miley and my daughter right there, Temuana. I always joke around and say that, you know, I get plenty kids, but the other ones are just borrow. When they're all good and stuff, and then when they turn rotten, I just put me friend to send, and I send them there. But anyways, I'm running, guys. I guess I take it on a different approach as to why I'm running. Okay, so I'll give you a little bit of background about me. My dad was a commercial fisherman. I'm a third-generation fisherman, okay? Growing up, we used to fish in the Northwest Hawaiian Islands. Anybody been there? Yeah, it's far. The closest spot from here is about 95 miles. Okay, when you look around the island, around the whole boat, all you see is water. Okay? Culture is being attacked. Culture is being changed a lot, yeah? 1996, they put a coral reef amen... I don't know these fancy words, amendum, addendum? Something to protect the coral reef, okay? Started from Ni'au all the way to Kureato, okay? Fast forward 10 years, 2006, George Bush was a president. And they proposed this reef monument protection program called Papa Hana Mokuoka, okay? 50 miles wide, 1,200 miles long, okay? People think only the state of Hawaii is from Big Island to Ni'au. Well, we only one-third of the whole Hawaiian archipelago, okay? Fast forward 10 years, 2016, Obama in office now. Obama was on Hawaii guy, perfect. They come to Obama and say, hey, this is your last term. It'd be great to leave a legacy to expand what we already started. Okay, so now it's now 100 miles wide, 1,200 miles long. Almost 80% of our ocean, we cannot fish because of our government. The reason why I stepping up is that if we, as the people of Kauai, don't start realizing that what we say and what we do matters, then we're gonna lose everything. As a fisherman, guys, I tell you guys right now, if we don't mess... If we don't stand up and talk to the government, they're gonna turn our ocean into a swimming pool that we cannot even swim in. I don't know if you guys know that, okay? Dolphins, birds, turtles, monk seals. I don't know if you're liking me go on, yeah? But I guess I standing up here, my biggest thing is to get people really united, get people up and about. I know I've been ranting about fishing planning, but that's just my gig, yeah? If you guys know me, I'm just a regular local brother. And if win or lose, what I like is that people start getting involved and knowing that you're not gonna be somebody with a huge college education or plenty money for be... make a difference. Community is first, okay? Get seven people in office, great. But get 80,000 people that live on Kauai. And if we can get together and be as one, we'll be way more powerful as an island. So thank you, guys.
Question for you. I'm a professional, just ignore that. I'm glad you brought up fishing. And if I remember, you were a member of Western Pacific Regional Fish Management? Are you still in Westpac now?
Yes.
So the criticism of Westpac is that it favors too much the fishing industry, that it's not balancing environmental concerns, including the laws, and that we may be overfishing and therefore really endangering our ability for guys like you to survive. How would you respond to that?
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Okay, so thank you so much for that question. Fishing is something that everybody thinks that they know everything about, but they have no clue what is going on out there, okay? Statistically, historically, guys, if you guys look at our fishing, okay? The only thing that is in the decline right now is fishermen. Nobody that go out there on the ocean, okay? There's a conflict between longliners and regular, everyday shoreline fishermen over here, yeah? Or we call them weekend warriors. They just go out when the ahi bite in and they come back, okay? Let me ask you guys, how many of you guys enjoy paying $30 a pound for ahi? Because that's what it would be like if we don't have our longliners, okay? We are the most highly regulated fishery in the world, okay? I just brought up the monument, okay? Only America is not allowed to fish there. Nobody is policing that place. Why? Because no more money. Everybody like make rules, everybody like put things in place, but no more nobody to protect it, you know? I brought up turtles, monk seals, whales, birds, that's cash cows that. Everything is about money. There is no money in fishermen, okay? But there's money in protecting birds, there's money in protecting wildlife. And that's a huge conflict right there. So I stand for my people, I stand for my culture, and I hope that... I hope we can all come to an agreement that people is first over anything else. Thank you.
Abe, thanks very much, appreciate it. Addison Bulisun... Oh gosh, I probably went to the right... Bulisun? Bulisun. Chad Blair. Come on up.
Thank you, Chad Blar. He didn't say we couldn't take a stab at the moderator, right? Aloha, I'm Addison Bulisun. Born and raised here on Kauai. I'm gonna take a little bit different approach. We got four minutes, way longer than the 90 seconds we normally get. I'll go reverse order from history, and start from now. Just October 12, one week ago, my wife and I got to celebrate six-month-old Kila'a. Pili aloha ike kailoa me au au'a. That is the longest name I've ever have given in our family. So that's exciting. He's healthy and strong. We just came back from his six-month appointment. The love of our lives. A child that we never thought we would be graced with and so glad that we were... I mean, everything that we could hope for in a child, smart, intelligent, healthy. And he changed our world. He allowed us to see this world less from this imaginary visionary wanting it to be better for us and future children to a real-life, everyday fear of what is next for him. When we think about working for our community, it's always for our neighbors, for people we care about like our family. But when you have a child, you wake up in the middle of the night wondering, where do we put the trash when he grows up? Where do we find housing for him? And it becomes a lot more real. Then on July 17, 2024, I found myself in a hospital bed because they found a benign tumor in my spine that was fully pressing on my spinal cord, basically not allowing me to function from my waist down. One day, I woke up and couldn't walk and wondering as a chiropractor, this is not something I can adjust. Got an MRI done, got the surgery, basically two days later. And about 10 minutes before the surgery, the surgeon allowed me to do one thing. I asked... well, two things. It's kind of funny. One, I wanted him to listen to the Greatest Showman soundtrack while he was doing my surgery, so he gets pumped up and he's like the best ever doing it. But the second thing I asked him is if I could write one thing before you put me to sleep. And what I wrote was, "I love my life. I love everyone in it. And I love what I get to do. Thank you, everyone, for being in my life." Because I thought that was most likely or possibly the last moment of my time. Luckily, I came out of that, and that's July 17. And I'm standing here with you guys now and have most of my functions back. I thought I wasn't gonna be able to walk. And that experience allowed me to reevaluate everything. Because we had that then, a three-month-old. And when you have a three-month-old and you're not sleeping, you get a little bit delirious and you get think of crazy thoughts. But the crazy thoughts was, after the surgery, do I keep doing this work? And this work as a council member is about serving the community at the highest level. And so my top three priorities is everyone's priority. And it's the priority for my family and now for my child, which is housing. How do we find housing for our community? How do we make this place safe? And how do we take care of our island? And so I'm really excited and hopefully, this may be or may not be my last time talking to you in public. But if it is, and I don't get reelected, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to serve for the last two years.
Got a question for you. So I was reading your Q and A traffic. A lot of you have mentioned it already. And in your Q and A, you mentioned that we could do better with our town centers and multimodal solutions. Tell me a little bit more, tell us a little bit more. Maybe one idea or two in particular. We saw the traffic as we came in today, just from the airport.
Yeah, it's the best traffic in the world, right? Everyone's excited about it. Who loves traffic? No one's raising their hands, just if you're watching this back. Well, you know, my favorite thing to do, you know, God bless my grandma. She passed away six years ago. Just sitting with my grandma and sitting with kupuna, talk about the old days. Talk about how it used to be. And then kind of bridging that world. It used to be where you knew your neighbors, you knew everyone in that neighborhood. Everyone played on the streets, everyone hung out together. And that's because back in the day, we all lived together. These days, now, we live in the car. We literally live in the car. Like if you count all the minutes and hours you spend a day and you add it up, that time that we spent back in the day with family, watching kids, hanging out, doing the things that we love, which is be with each other, that was where our time was. And so in order for us to solve these traffic issues, we gotta get back to community living. And that's the solutions I wanna work on. I wanna work on solutions that allow our community to be like how we used to be. Live together, play together. The streets is not only just for cars. The streets is for us playing. I remember we used to play with tennis balls and chasing each other on the streets. That's what I wanna see for our community. So building uptown cores is important for us instead of making every job and every house so far away where we gotta spend two hours driving. And that's important to me for every town on Kauai. And hopefully, that's something that resonates with the whole town of Hawaii or Hawaii, whole state of Hawaii. Because when we get to that community living, it improves everything. Health, families, relationships, and just the way we get to be with each other. Thank you.
Thanks, Addison.
Thanks, Mr. Bla.
Mr. Bla. We'll cut that out, that'll not make the edits. Next up is Kipukai Kuualii, come on up.
Aloha. Aloha. I'm Kipukai Kuualii, the council vice chair. In my time serving you, I've proven myself to be hardworking, trustworthy, and thoughtful. And I've demonstrated my strength with budgeting, my understanding of the issues, and my commitment to always doing my homework, listening carefully, and working collaboratively. I was raised in a low-income, working-class family and grew up in Kipukai Ranch, Hanamala low-income housing, and old Puhi plantation camp. I traveled the world, up with people, promoting multiculturalism and racial equality. And across the country, with pride at work, promoting cooperation between the labor and LGBTQ movements. I have nearly 40 years' experience working and volunteering for government, union, nonprofit, and community organizations. I did work for the city of West Hollywood and finance for most of the 90s before heading to our nation's capital, where I worked for the AFL-CIO Civil Rights Department. Since coming home in 2001, I've worked for the United Public Workers, Kauai Community College, and the YWCA of Kauai. I'm committed with your help to continue using my experience, relationships, and dedication to advocate and fight for responsible budgeting and limited taxes, job creation in small businesses, affordable housing, both homes and rentals, clean renewable energy to 100%, resilient communities and walkable towns, sustenance lifestyles, including farming, fishing, gathering, hunting, and ranching, and collaborative solutions to drug abuse, homelessness, traffic congestion, and burn. Our housing shortage crisis is our most pressing challenge. To increase supply and lower cost, we must support the building of more housing of all types. As housing chair, I've worked with the mayor and the housing director to bring about critically needed improvements to our housing policy, incentivizing developers and infill town core multifamily projects. I've also helped pass bills supporting additional rental units, ARUs, by waiving fees for zoning, sewer, and building permits, creating a subsidy for water meters, and exempting environmental assessments, saving over $20,000 per ARU. Former council member Evson and I also passed a bill supporting tiny homes, legalizing sleeping lofts, lowering ceiling heights, and allowing for stairs and ladders designed for small spaces. I helped bring about increased investments to our housing development fund, including the now-required minimal annual investment of 2% of our real property taxes. I supported the mayor's vacation rental tax increase, bringing it to the same level as hotels, which garnered $8 million. And along with council member DeCosta, I helped raise the rates on both vacation rentals and hotels, raising an additional $7.5 million, all dedicated to our housing fund. Our county is working hard to replicate successful projects like our Kealaula transitional housing, our Haupu View affordable rentals, and our Limaola project in Eleele that includes senior, single-family, and affordable housing. We're also partnering with the state and developers to go after tax credits and federal funding. We're also providing fast-track permitting and a streamlined regulatory process. I'm humbly asking for one of your seven votes in the upcoming election. You can reach me at kipukai@kuualii@gmail.com, and my website is www.kuualii.com. Mahalo.
I was gonna ask you about traffic. Did you mention affordable housing, particularly your experience on the council? Tell me how the tiny homes are there... Did you actually... This is partly my ignorance, being from Oahu. Have you guys actually set some of these up? Are they sufficient to... I mean, does it have plumbing? Can you cook there? And how are people reacting to these? I don't honestly know, but I thought it would be enlightening because we're wrestling with the same problem. Part of it's NIMBY. People don't want it in their backyards. I know I throw a lot at you with that question, but specifically to these tiny homes, modular homes, and so forth.
Let me just start with NIMBY. I think it's really important that at least most of our leaders have been stepping forward and being brave, and starting with our mayor. And I think it's really important that we convince our community, and people are coming along. People are recognizing that, yes, we need it in our own backyards. Because it's our own kids, right, that are moving away. And so if we wanna be part of the solution, then we have to give up a little bit. It's not just about, you know, how things look or the property values. It's how... what's the quality of life for all of our citizens? So I'm hoping that NIMBY truly is a thing of the past. I think when it comes to tiny homes, I don't know specifically. I haven't... We haven't seen any projects yet. But I think it's just giving people more options. Because there's a lot of people out there who wants to solve the housing problems for themselves and their own families. And the ADUs, the ARUs, that's all helping. And then the fact that, you know, we create the mechanism with the permitting law to allow for more will absolutely give people more of an opportunity to solve it for themselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You know, I asked that question because we've been reporting on housing forever. I grew up in the Midwest and my grandparents on my mom's side stayed in trailer parks, had a mobile home. You don't have those in Hawaii and that's another thing that comes up as well. And there's reasons for that, but thank you for asking that question. Uh, next up is Ross Kagawa. Ross, come on up.
Thank you, thank you, Civil Beat. I'm a religious reader of all of your, uh, newspaper articles. I think you guys do a great job, uh, better than what you read in the Star Advertiser and such. So I want to thank you guys. Thank you guys for having us here. Thank you for giving us, you know, uh, some views in the, uh, in Hawaii, you know, newspaper. So thank you for being here. So my name is Ross Kagawa. I'm, uh, forty, I'm fifty-eight years old, uh, graduate of Waimea High School, like Abe and Billy, uh, nineteen eighty-four grad. Uh, I went on to play college baseball for University of Hawaii, uh, back when K5 used to show our games. So I think, you know, when I first ran in 2012, I think the name recognition kind of helped, I think, me along, but there were only nine candidates the first time around. Uh, when I first got in, you know, I'd like to give a lot of credit to Mel. I think, um, myself and Mel, we were, um, on the minority side, uh, of the council. And by the next election, we got in again and we turned into the majority where Mel became the, uh, council chair and I became the vice chair. So, you know, I think, uh, us being together at, at that time, I think, you know, it kind of changed government and, you know, Mel's still the chair right now. So, you know, I think we got control of, you know, the island, I think being a voice for local people. So I've been married for thirty-two years to Moi Cathy. Uh, my mom's here as well. She owned a restaurant called Sue Snack Shop in the LAL Shopping Center. So, um, you know, I, I got to see, you know, how hard she worked, you know, she worked, uh, you know, Monday through Saturday, like, uh, seven in the morning to five, I mean, every week, every day. And, you know, she really worked hard, showed me what, you know, hard work was about without making, you know, so much money. But, you know, we had a lot of friends that we made through, through her business. Uh, my dad was a deputy county engineer for the county of Kauai for like 12 years, back when I think the county had all of the facilities, uh, infrastructure was good back then, you know, in the, in the mid, uh, mid, early eighties and mid eighties. So, uh, but, you know, he left, went to the base, you know, I lost, we lost him about 30 years ago, but, um, you know, that was tough. But my dad kind of got me into politics. You know, he, he was a, um, Kauai chair for, uh, Lieutenant Governor Wahai. And then, uh, when he went for his governor run, so he was, he was with, uh, John Wahai for, from the beginning. He became, well, he got appointed to the Aloha Stadium Authority and, you know, served there. And then that's when he passed and then I got to serve in his place for a couple of years. And, you know, that was a great experience for me. We had Michael Jackson, we had the, uh, the Eagles, we had the Rolling Stones, all during my time at the Stadium Authority. So, you know, I think, I like to think that, you know, that time that I served was the highlight of Aloha Stadium, you know, during that, during that two years I was there, you know, to have, you know, those groups, which never seen before, right? You know, I, uh, you know, so yeah, 2012, I ran, won, um, served eight years, um, I turned out, I ran again, I lost, but Luke Evelyn vacated the council seat, went to the house and thankfully I got the votes of my council members, most of them, and I, you know, got back on the council. Uh, this time I'm working really hard. Uh, I'm, I'm really out there, you know, trying to make sure that this time I, I don't lose. So I just have to humbly ask for one of your seven votes. Uh, people on Kauai, they know me, they know that I work hard, I get the job done and, you know, I try to be humble about things.
Great. You got a question?
Thanks.
That, that was the theme to Rocky, right? Is that what that was? Looking at your Q and A, you mentioned cesspools, you're on the council now. How is that going? Uh, the EPA has really been cracking down on us, uh, conversion, septic tanks. Are you getting enough support, both from the state and federal? Give us an update on your thoughts on cesspools.
Yeah, you know, the only way we're gonna, uh, kind of fix our housing problem is we're gonna have to tackle the cesspool conversion problem together with our state. You know, so Mel is currently working with our legislature. We're gonna work hard this year if I get back on, uh, trying to get the legislature to, you know, that 2015 mandate is causing, uh, the, the State Department of Health to require any cesspool to be changed, even if you're just expanding your houses a little bit, even if it may not be for, it may be for comfort, it may not necessarily be to rent out to, to other people, but it just automatically triggers the, the conversion of your cesspool. On Kauai, I don't know whether they're price gouging or what have you, but the contractors are charging, you know, for the removal, for the cover up of your cesspool and the installation of your septic tanks, anywhere from like 50 to 70,000. So, you know, that alone is just killing a lot of people from expanding houses, trying to take care of their families so their families can, you know, maybe save up some money to, to buy these 1.2 million dollar median income homes. So, you know, that again, that, that is caused by, uh, supply and demand. We don't have enough supply to meet our growing demand, what, 800,000? But that cesspool conversion, you know, problem, I think it is so bad in Hawaii that I'm hoping that maybe, you know, we gotta go to our congressional delegation, perhaps, you know, if they can give us anything like how they did with solar cars, that kind of 35% credit, I think, you know, those kind of things, with an exception for Kauai, because we're the only island state that, we don't have the room like the, the other states in the United States, but I don't know, so just something that, um, they could do, any exception would help because, uh, I don't know how, you know, we're gonna meet that 2015 mandate. Thank you. Can you play the Rocky song as a waka?
Dun, takadun, takadun, takadun. You're welcome. That was not an endorsement. Thanks, Ross. Billy DeCosta, you're coming, you're coming up next.
Thank you, Civil Beat for being here. It's nice to see some non-biased publicity for everybody. So thank you very much. Uh, Westside boy, four generations Portuguese Spaniard, um, married 27 years, together with my wife for 33 years. She's been the backbone. A lot of times I may look like I'm the face of the family, but with all the strong wife, I am nobody. We raised three rascal sons, 26. He's in the electrical union, just met a really special girl from Kaula, local girl. My 24-year-old is like my wife, an ICU nurse up in Washington, graduated from Seattle University. And my baby is a fraternity vice president, enjoying his time and studying construction management in California. I graduated with an economics degree out of Humboldt State University. I came back, was an accountant on Oahu for three years. I did seven years part-time as a longshoreman and then I got into the Department Education Rice Program. I did that in 2000 and I've been teaching now, currently, right now for 24 years. I did 10 years of environmental science up in Koke, where I did every public fourth grade school on the island and across the state. We had Molokai, we had Maui, we had Oahu kids come. That was kind of my signature. I'm currently at the district office running the ALPS program, which is a drug rehabilitation program for alternative learning. Uh, my, my work as a council member, um, and I'm proud to say this, I went to high school with Ross. I, I know Bernard because I was a little bit younger than him. Mel was my, uh, classmate from another high school across the way. We would go dancing at the gym in Kauai school, he would come Waimea. But it's nice to sit and get policy done. As a council member, our job is to do policy. We don't make fires, we don't put out fires. We make laws to make Kauai a better place. One of my signature laws was a bill that Mel Reposo and I self worked on, Ag, Bill 2933, went through second reading, we got the majority of all the votes and we're gonna put more density on ag land so we can have more housing here on Kauai. Kipukai and I worked on this watershed, um, agreement with the water department. We, we, we asked water, areas that do not have water, can we do rain catchment? And they told us they cannot regulate us. So if you have a lot in Kapahai, Oahu, you can do rain catchment, they cannot stop you. We did a tax hike. I, I introduced it, I might've cut my throat this election, but we introduced a resolution, we raised a tax hike on hotels and TBRs, we put that money into middle-class funding. The housing shortage, we do a lot of low-income Habitat for Humanity, we do a lot of homeless shelter housing. We don't do middle-class housing. We don't have money as a county. That's not our priority. If we want to get any extra money, we gotta raise your property tax. Do you know, right now, you pay the lowest property tax per value? That was introduced by a chair, $2.39, I believe, and we all followed him, followed his leadership. Well, we took that step, next further, got that bill, well, resolution passed, and now we're gonna generate about $8 million like Kipukai Kuualii mentioned, and we can buy land, build infrastructure, work with a developer and make middle-class housing for teachers, parents that have firemen, firefighters, police. Here's another one that I'm very proud of. A lot of you think that on Wednesdays we get the job done. We don't. It's not done on Wednesdays, it's done during a week, when you go meet with different departments, meet with the mayor, meet with his managing director, meet with the chief of staff. Do you know we put $500,000 in a grant that went to kill a way egg for the egg program that supplies all of the notchro and the groceries? How cool would it be if we can have an egg program on the west side? How cool would it be if one day we have our own rodeo arena? I led the charge in that. We put $750,000 into a rodeo arena that's gonna start taking happening because my council backed me up during budget. I get stuff done, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Billy DeCosta, and I'm here to serve. Please cast one vote for me. Thank you.
Got a question for you. Uh, as you said, you're on the council and, and you mentioned, I hope I got this right, but you, you talked about competing with billionaires and you mentioned land banking, land banking. I mean, that, I think you mentioned $8 million for buying land. How do you compete with the Zuckerbergs, the guys that have so much money and who are able to, you know, persuade a lot of people that they're better? That was in your Q and A, right? Tell me a little bit more about that, land banking.
Well, when a billionaire buys land, and, and I'm really proud on this one, um, council member Luke, Luke Evson and myself did a tax exemption bill for Ni'ao because we're really afraid that if Robinson couldn't pay their taxes, that island would be bought by billionaire. So we made sure that the Kanaka was taken care of. When a billionaire buy land, we have many of them on the island, you know, you got Zuckerberg, you got Court Shack, you, you, you got, um, Banderas. They don't buy land to let other people live on their land. They buy land because they like their space. As a council, I don't know if you guys noticed, but there's a thing called condemnation. We have a very powerful thing where we can condemn land. If we have money in our coffers, we can buy land, we can buy land from these landowners. Grow Farm is really wanting to sell land right now. Why are we gonna wait for another billionaire to buy that land? We should buy some of that land. We should, we should land bank a few hundred acres right now. And I think Chair Reposo is leading the march on that, to go and buy some land with this money that we got when he passed that hotel and TBR tax resolution. So we're making big moves right now as a council.
Great.
Thank you. I thought he was gonna ask you how nice I dress.
Actually, I was gonna ask you about your boots, man. Those are nice, those are sharp.
I'm telling my story about it.
Okay. Uh, yeah, talking about billionaires and islands, Lanai, uh, but that's another story, another county. Fern Holland, come on up.
We're just met her over here. Trying to be a little bit more prepared for this one since it's the tight four minutes. So I'm gonna read like I don't usually, but aloha. Uh, my name is Fernand Nui Nui Holland and I was born and raised on Kauai. Um, growing up mostly on the east side of Kauai, I graduated from Kapah High School and I left for school, university, and I moved home, uh, with my education and experience to serve our community, um, and our island. I understand what it's like to struggle to make ends meet here and I understand the systemic issues that face our society. I watched many of my loved ones and friends struggle, uh, with affordability, housing, drug addiction and the lack of opportunity on Kauai. And I see the pressure that local families are under, uh, to stay here with the rising costs, the reality for so many that we're being priced out of our home, uh, one less homeownership. Uh, too many families have already been forced, uh, to leave Kauai. So I'm running for office because I see an opportunity to help fight for local families and use my education and experience to help us navigate the important county needs like infrastructure, our landfill and waste problems, our wastewater treatment and sewer needs, and our long-term resiliency for the future. And many have already spoken about the important work and needs that are happening. I am running because I believe I can help us to navigate these tough issues that we face thoughtfully, uh, so that we can build a better future for Kauai and Ni'ao, uh, while honoring our unique history, our way of life, our culture and our sensitive environments. Since moving home from college with my bachelor's of science degree, uh, with triple majors in marine biology, wildlife management and environmental science, I have participated in many community organizing and environmental conversations. I have engaged many times and testified on issues before the state legislature and the county. I currently work as the director of fair and sustainable food systems for Hapa, working towards statewide transformation of our food systems to an abundant and regenerative productive system that diversifies and boosts our economy while sustaining us and our food security for the very long term. I will bring my passion and experience, uh, working in areas of increased local agriculture, food production and environmental protection to the council to address our core issues and prioritize the affordable housing crisis, combat the systemic drug abuse issues and addiction issues we face, solve our waste and landfill needs and strengthen and diversify our economy while helping to shape lucrative, well-managed and eco-based tourism opportunities for locals to truly thrive here. I will work hard for Kauai and my life experience and education will bring a lot to that conversation. I am respectful and collaborative and I understand the importance of working with others on our council and what the importance of aloha and the shared love of our home really brings to the table. I have always put the work first. I can agree to work well with people even when we don't agree. Um, and I think it's important to embody that as an elected official and the ability to work together with aloha. My ability to be analytical, work collaboratively and communicate well will benefit the work and dynamics within the Kauai County Council and help us to be productive. There are a lot of online ser- surveys and questionnaires available, including the one hosted by Civil Beat online, where you can see more about exactly where I stand on issues and what my priorities are. I'm very accessible and responsive. You can find out more about me and my platform or reach out to me via my website at votefern.com. Along with my love for Kauai, my education and experience, I will bring to the council an open door, transparency, integrity and hard work ethic. I have never been elected before and I know I need to work hard to introduce myself to the people of Kauai. So I've worked very hard this year campaigning, spending a huge amount of effort and working to fundraise to reach voters via my ballot, mailers, uh, banners and calls and outreach. So again, my name is Fernand Nui Nui Holland and I'm humbly asking for one of your votes for the Kauai County Council. Thank you so much for Civil Beat and the opportunity for everyone turning up and turning out the vote this year. Mahalo.
We have actually communicated via email.
Yeah, many times.
It's like, why do I know her? And we've, uh, she's actually emailed a lot and it, that's great. I finally get to meet people I've only met online. That sounds a little weird. Like this is very sad, uh, via email and text and phone. So I do have a question for you. I want to make sure I have this right. Uh, you mentioned your degrees, uh, envi- you're an environmental scientist, right? I'm assuming you believe climate change is real and a serious threat to your lovely island here. What do you tell people who say it isn't happening? It's a hoax, that's a waste of money, we're just helping the solar industry, whatever the case may be? Because as you said, if you get on the council, you gotta work with people that you disagree with.
Yeah, and thank you for the question. So I think that the conversation is really about how we're polluting our atmosphere and, and I do understand, um, through my degree and my chemistry, my last major, I did pollution chemistry, ecotoxicology, atmospheric chemistry, chem one, chem two, organic chem. I did all the chems and I got an in-depth look into our atmosphere and the chemistry and the delicate balance that sits there, you know? And a lot of the things, which is why I've spoken out against, um, incineration of our waste additionally, because of what we're learning about microplastics and the stuff that enters into the atmosphere and then rains back down on us. And, um, and so I think that the conversation has been largely greenwashed. Um, I think there's, there's a certain extent of people that are disaster capitalists sort of tend to latch on to this and use it as a way to build money. And I think that's built distrust, uh, within the community. I think people don't trust things like they may have used to. Uh, I think that's part of the problem. I also think that we really just need to have a real conversation about pollution in general and how we need to be conscious of how we adapt, uh, to what is our, we're already seeing the impacts of climate change throughout the Pacific. So I think a lot of it's about having real conversations and being honest about ways that the conversation has been manipulated, um, to further, there's a lot of great technologies, for example, that have been avoided that could help to extract carbon from the atmosphere that could help transition us to better greener energies, but the money isn't behind it. And then we see these ways that money is behind it, uh, and those things seem to take off. And I think that that's further built, uh, distrust in the overall, uh, conversation of, about the science behind.
Okay.
Nice.
Yeah, thanks, Fern. I wasn't expecting that answer. I appreciate your being frank about that. Uh, Mel Reposo, come on up, you're next, sir. Mel's not gonna remember this, but I first met you like 20 years ago when I was a Pacific businessman. Do you remember that? No, you don't remember. I was much thinner.
I'm gonna put my, uh, I'm gonna put my timer just so that, because that white sign really freaks me out. Hello, everyone. My name is Mel Reposo. Uh, and first of all, thanks to Civil Beat, that like Ross said, you, you know, you're, I think for many of us, you're our go-to media source because we don't even have, uh, me, uh, local media here. Uh, you know, the Garden Island is simply the, the, the replay of the Star Advertiser. So today's Garden Island was yesterday's, it's the same, same thing. So thank you for being here. Uh, Mel Reposo, born and raised here on Kauai. I've been on a council, this is my 16th year, my eighth term, and I'm probably the OG now, I'm the old man. Uh, my wife Patsy here, we've been married 35 years. We have two kids, Baron, my son, who lives in Oregon. My daughter Nicole, who lives in Texas. Uh, Nicole just gave us our first grandson last year. Uh, unfortunately, they are, one is an Argonian and one is a Texan. And that, that fuels my they are, one is an Argonian and one is a Texan. And that fuels my fire, and that's one of the reasons I decided, I turned out in 2018 and took a four-year break and decided to run again because I am tired and disgusted of seeing our kids having to move. And I think you've heard many of the issues that surround us today, and that is, it's housing, you know, the big issue, the landfill. For me, is the most critical issue because you will not have housing, you will not have anything if we cannot take care of our waste. Wastewater is another big issue. You know, I believe that we gotta get the community involved, and that's what I appreciate. Civil Beat, you guys do a great job at connecting community to government. That's lacking here. And you know, I do a weekly podcast on YouTube and Facebook and trying to get the people engaged because government cannot work if we don't have the engagement from the community. We just cannot. And I struggle with that, you know. Tonight is a good example. Yeah, I thought we'd have a lot of people here tonight because it was well-promoted, but I think people may have just given up, and maybe they're just fed up, and maybe they just don't trust government, and we gotta do a better job. You know, real quick, I ran for mayor twice on this island, twice, and I lost twice. And the two times I ran for mayor, my platform was the same. It was infrastructure. It was the landfill. It was wastewater. It was water. And all the advisors told me, Mel, you're not gonna win, bro. You cannot, you cannot just be doom and gloom, but I was truthful. And today, many, many, many years later, what? We're in a crisis now. We're in a landfill crisis. We're in a wastewater crisis. And there's no solution in sight. We're in trouble. My point is that we gotta tackle these issues head-on, and we gotta have the courage to move on these issues as a council, as an administration. And that is why I have decided to continue on my career as a council member. I am, yes, I am outspoken at times. Yes, I am sometimes painfully honest, but how else will the people understand what is going on? And that's what I try to do. But once we get the community engaged, once we get the community excited and feel like they have a say, we get better governance. We do. Kauai, we have a lot of issues, but we have an amazing place. Traffic? Lord have mercy. You know, my position, my plan was always to open up the cane haul roads. You know, just open them up. The cane trucks used it for decades. No, we can't do that. More lanes, more cars. Well, folks, the car's already here. Billionaires taking over our island, and I appreciate what Mr. DiCosta and some of our council members are working on to say, hold on, timeout. Let's go get the land before the billionaires do. Grow Farm, the former A and B, Robinson, all of these landowners are willing to work with the counties and give us good deals on these properties. And I am working with a bunch of them, but we gotta be ready to pull the trigger. We gotta be able to make the commitment and make it happen. And that is why, again, I am deciding to run again, and I hope I can get your support. I do want to thank my colleagues here for giving me the honor to be the Chair of this council. That's my four minutes. And my sixth year as the Chair, and I try my best to make sure that, again, our message gets out to the public.
I actually have a question.
I don't want your question.
No, that's right.
Just gonna ask you about cocoa palms, but no, I'm kidding. No, I do, I'm gonna throw this one at you because, as you said, you've served, you had to leave, come back, and you guys have term limits. But I want to make sure you understand this correctly. On Kauai, you're not limited to just two terms. You can come back and run again. Is that right? That's my first question.
Kauai is weird because we have two-year council terms, so we have four two-year terms, eight years. Unlike the other counties, once you term out, you're done. You cannot come back. Here, we can. You gotta take a break, and then you can come back.
Okay. And then this is my more substantive question is, what do you think about term limits? I mean, you don't have them at the State House, the State Senate. You have them for the governor, the LG. You don't have them for Congress, but that's at congressional level. But all the counties do have in some form or another. Although, is your prosecutor term limited?
No.
No, I think that might be the exception because pretty much. So can you tell me a little bit, some people say term limits, ah, with old ideas, corruption, so forth, versus new blood, people coming in. How would you respond to that?
You know, my mentor in politics was Council Chair Kaipua Singh. The guy served, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'll catch him up. I don't know. But, you know, he was like, he was the man, and he always said that term limits are at the ballot box. That is when the term limits... Let me just say it this way. If I had to choose between a two-year term, if we have a two-year term, I don't like term limits. It's just not enough time, especially for the new council members that come in. It takes a while to learn this process. So it just doesn't make sense with term limits for two-year terms. Four-year terms, I think, is probably more adept to term limits. I believe term limits should be done at the ballot box, my personal opinion, and let the people decide who they want to represent them. Legislature, Congress ironically don't have them. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I could make an argument on both sides. I think the term limits, to me, should be the people's choice at the ballot.
Okay, great.
All right, Ted. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thanks, Mel. I gotta tell you, the term limits comes up nearly every year at the legislature, but you're asking the very same people to limit their own jobs? Is there any wonder that it dies year after year, session after session? We have two more to go. Felicia Cowden, a councilwoman as well, come on up.
All right. Got this set up, and I'm gonna follow the chair's lead and do my timing. Okay, so I am Felicia Cowden, and it's been an honor to serve you. This is, I'm going into my fourth term, so this will be the end of my, with my term limits. I have lived on the North Shore here for 40 years. I live in Kilauea. I was born in Colorado. Most of my childhood was moving a lot, kind of constantly, but mostly around the Rockies between Arizona and Colorado. And I'm running because of my history of community involvement. My career has been in business, had surf and skate shops, engineering, education in a handful of different ways, media, and decades of nonprofit board focus, basically on youth at risk, education, economic empowerment, and small-scale agriculture. And I was 14 years, I've been 14 years as a talk show host. I think that and being a community mediator at the courts is one of the reasons why I was elected to office. I'm very good at listening to all sides of a topic and try and find that middle ground. And so I try to weave all those skills to solving the big challenges that we're having. And what I would say, the huge challenge that faced Kauai and many other places in the nation is displacement. We're having a big pushout through all this incredible level of inflation. And then, as people can move here economically independently, they don't even have to work when they're here. So I say, we can't have everybody riding in the cart. Somebody has to pull it. So we need really hard to keep our people who have history at knowing how to manage our island, like our generational community. We need people who know how to do the work, and we need people who are willing to work. So when the question is asked, what are my two to three issues, I will say, number one, keeping our people on the island; two, keeping our people safe; and three, keeping our people empowered. So how do we do that? Well, with the housing, we definitely need to do infrastructure. I support what my colleagues have said about doing our infrastructure, and our biggest challenge is the landfill because the Environmental Protection Agency, which is designed for a continent, is not designed for the perimeter of an island. And so we have real big challenges with that. But with housing, I look at things a little bit differently. I like "and" as much as "or." It's not "or," it's "and." Like, so our housing department has become a developer, and we've done a really good job of creating kind of a form of shared housing, but a lot of these will be lease-owned. And so I have a different way I would like to use that eight million dollars. And I, by the way, didn't support a tax increase, and I'm not going to support tax hikes because I feel like tax hikes are the driver of the displacement, even if it's not the original people that are taxed. We've done a good job with our own owner-occupant taxing. But I'd like to take that money we have and invest in down payments and home retention with like a 0% interest, 15-year deferral. And we recently saw an exposure of how that can be done, where the resale, you have a deed restriction so that it has to be sold to another person who lives and works on the island. But how do we keep our people safe? Evacuation routes, flood and fire mitigation, keeping our people empowered. We need to strengthen small business. We need to stand with the workers. I'm proud to have the support of seven unions, two large business associations, and some community associations. We need to perpetuate our Hawaiian culture. We need to nourish our people. I'm gonna hear my little ring. All right. And growing our own food. Yeah. I won't talk a whole lot about all of that. And I can talk about cocoa palms if you want it, and flooding.
No, I won't ask you about cocoa palms, but I was intrigued. And correct me if I got this wrong or right from your Q and A. You grow your own food at your place in Kilauea, is that right? And it sounds like you're able to feed yourself without having to rely too much. Do you see a Kauai one day that can be as sustainable as you are? That is a goal for the state, not just in energy, but food. We used to have Ahupua.
So I'm gonna say, if I can do it, anybody can. And I'm not the biggest, strongest person. I like to pick on Abe. He might have left. Like, he's the biggest, strongest person of a lot of us right here. Well, maybe not. I don't know. Anyway, not gonna argue that. Okay, I'm not the one. So if I can do it, anybody can, and I do neighborhood agriculture. And I used to have what I would call 4191 food. I live on 4191 Kilauea Road. I had tilapia and eggs and all kinds of food in there. And you definitely can do it, and I don't like to weed water or work. And so I live in the rain shadow, so it's easier, but we do restorative agriculture, regenerative agriculture, and I do believe it's very easy. And I remember when I first came to Kauai, which was in the early 80s, and drive down the streets, and there was just food bursting over everybody's yards. And that's how mine is. I say, it looks like my hair. I like to think a nice mess. And where I have the food hanging outside the yarden, that's for everybody. I got a picker on the outside. It is definitely doable, and it can happen fast. It really can. We don't need to be dependent on convenience. While I'm working in this office, I go a lot of buffets though, so I'm not...
Thank you, Felicia. Thank you very much. Okay, we got one more, and then I'll just have some closing remarks, and then we got a plane to catch. And but Butch, Keahie Olalo, come on up.
I told Fern I was gonna wing this, but I wrote a bunch of notes because I was last. Can you hear me okay? All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. I'm Hawaiian. I'm not from here. It's kind of my theme tonight. I'll say that again. I'm Hawaiian. I'm not from here. Okay? I wish I was born and raised here. I do. I really do. I was the first one in my family to not be born here. I think that's gonna be a theme, unfortunately, that we're gonna see in the next decade or two decades or three decades. Is it a bad thing? I'm not sure. All I can say is, I wouldn't be me if I was born and raised here. I've had a lot of experiences, different careers, different educational backgrounds, but that's kind of my theme tonight, so if you can just kind of hold on to that. All right, I'll start. I get emotional sometimes. This is, I've had a, I've had a pretty interesting journey to get to where I am, so I'll start from the beginning. I was born in Texas, not by choice. My dad was stationed at Fort Walters. Served two terms in Vietnam, helicopter pilot. Moved all over, Alabama, Georgia, lived in trailer homes and military bases. Went to school in Indiana. I think you mentioned the Midwest. Yeah, spent a lot of time in the Midwest. Been in three tornadoes, so you don't want to be in a trailer home in a tornado, so had those experiences. My dad was very abusive, so the cops pulled me out of my house when I was about 16. Pretty much surfed from couch to couch, lived in my car pouring concrete in the summer, worked three jobs. Went to Purdue University, studied electrical engineering, got a degree in mathematics with a minor in education. I pretty much made breakfast for 400 or 800 guys every morning in my dorm, and then I was a mechanic at night. Pushed through, just perseverance, just trying to make a better life for myself. And, but yeah, growing up, people are like, oh, you're pretty dark. What are you? I'm like, I'm Hawaiian, but I'm not from here, you know? I don't, people ask me where I'm from, and I didn't really know. So they go, oh, do you surf? No, I've never surfed. I've never even been to the ocean. Do you speak Hawaiian? No, I don't speak Hawaiian. Well, then how can you be Hawaiian? I'm like, I don't know. I got postcards and T-shirts for my family growing up. You know, I got, I got pictures. I met my great-grandparents. So it was, it was kind of a, it was a struggle for me to not be connected. And then after college, I taught high school, and then January of 1993, on the 17th, I found myself at the Iolani Palace. My first time in Hawaii, and I'm there for the anniversary of the overthrow. And it was, it was pretty heavy. It was heavy for me. I'd never been in the ocean before. I went back to Colorado where I was teaching high school, and I packed up my stuff, and I came here in 1994. Sailed on the Hokulea, got to hang out with Dinua Thompson, met a bunch of great guys teaching at Kauai High School, got a surfboard from Ambrose and Kapaa, learned how to surf pakalas every day, 40 days straight. You know, just instantly felt connected. KCC took Kauai language. I felt like I was home. I really, I really did for the first time. And not having any family members on this island. My mom, guys, are all from Oahu, a family on the Big Island. So, but I would tell you, when I came here in 1994, it felt foreign to me, and I don't mean that in a bad way. It just felt like a foreign place, like somewhere I've never been before. And now it doesn't. It doesn't feel foreign. It feels like all the other places I've lived. So I'd really like to find a way to perpetuate the culture. I just finished another Molokai channel last weekend, do a lot of sail canoe races, and my kids are in college right now. I'm married with two girls. They're both in Arizona. And we all talk about, we want our kids and our grandkids to come back here. And I just hope my kids don't say, you know, I'm Hawaiian, I'm not from here. I want them to come home.
So Butch, I want to make sure I have this right. Retired fireman?
Yes, retired fireman.
Okay, so can what happened on Maui happen here? Is Kauai prepared?
It can definitely happen here. We had some pretty good fires. Oh, jeez, man, I was on rescue for years. I lost track of how many brush fires that I went on all over the island. I mean, right before I retired, we had one in Lahui between Molokoa and the airport that most people didn't even know about. And we were just eating smoke, facing the fire, the head of the fire, and we probably saved that whole neighborhood. Never made the news. Like, it was, I mean, it was like, there was a homeless camp right there. It started at the homeless camp, and the wind was blowing like 30 knots that day. So it can, it can happen. Yeah, it can, it can happen. Are we prepared? You know, it's like the landfill, right? You need a backup plan, right? You need, you need resources. You gotta have a backup plan. You gotta have, you gotta have community support. I have an idea for, I talked to this gentleman. Basically, we can empower some of our local kids, and we can basically make them like wildland firefighters. They do it in Native American tribes on the mainland or in, what do you call it, continental US? And they basically train those kids as firefighters, those young, those young adults, and they're another, they're another resource. Yeah, it's, I could, I could speak about this for hours, so it's hard to answer in such a short amount of time, but we can do more to be prepared. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, in many ways, it felt like we just scratched the surface in that hour or so. I want to thank all of you. Remember, we're gonna post this online very shortly, and I think we'll actually send out an email notice to you for the folks that have registered here. Remember, did you get your ballots today? Yes?
Yes.
Today was the... Okay, yesterday. That's good. Election is November the 5th. Please help yourself to the food and the water and other beverages because we're catching a plane back to Oahu, and we gotta start cleaning up here. But if you know some folks that could use some food, homeless, whoever it is, we would really appreciate that. I'd now like to close this by saying thank you for having us, and a big round of applause to the Kauai County Council candidates.